...on the front lines. We pause now also to offer you thanksgiving, for we truly have been blessed as a nation, a state, and a county. And we would ask that you would be honored by all that is said and done in this place. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our November 21st regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Franklin.
I would like to take item number 29 separately, please.
Are there any others?
Uh, yes. I would like to pull number six.
Pull it?
Yes.
All together?
All together.
Or is there a second to this motion?
I have some too.
Is there a second to her motion to remove it from the agenda?
Oh, she's doing that to remove it totally. Yes, I second that motion, sir.
Any questions?
Uh-uh.
Uh, the question I have is, I guess there's some follow-up questions that you need answered.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, Commissioner Anderson? Oh, you got another?
Uh, yes. I have some others.
Go ahead.
I would like to, uh, move, um, number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty to the regular agenda.
Madam Clerk, you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Any others?
Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to move number ten, and number eleven, and number twelve to the regular agenda, just for explanations.
Number, give me those numbers again.
Ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay. Are there any others? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
It's a motion to accept the consent agenda. Oh, wait, but we have an add-on.
Oh.
And we did not, uh, cover it.
Apologies.
Yes.
Is that it?
No.
No, the...
Is that two sixty-seven?
No, it's, uh, two sixty-eight. Resolution two sixty-eight.
I got sixty-seven. I got sixty-seven, too. We don't have sixty-eight.
Um, two sixty-seven was actually the, um, was a slight amendment to what you have adopted. Uh, there was a slight change to the language that was... Yes, that was item thirty-one on your agenda.
So it was a slight?
A slight change in the language there. Uh, my request is to add resolution two sixty-eight, which is, if you would just give me one second, is a, um... I'm sorry, I, I had sent it, but I did not print it out. Okay, it is a resolution providing for the levy and collection of an annual avalorum tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal of an interest on two hundred and eighty million dollars in aggregate principal amount of Clayton County School District General Obligation Bonds, uh, series twen- twenty-two-three, and to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. And this is essentially, uh, the reason why it's being added as a emergency item is that the school board, uh, needed to, uh, issue these general obligation bonds, and they, and they have certain timelines that are coming up that will occur before the board meets again on, um, December fifth.
All right. I will offer that up as a motion, uh, for the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Considering that, as you mentioned, you couldn't print it out, and we don't have it in front of us, I just have a couple of questions. So what is this board actually passing? Are we passing that we understand that the school system will be moving that direction, into that direction? Or are we voting on the agreement or the actual documents themselves, because we don't have anything?
Right. No, this, uh, is just, uh, a resolution to state that the, um, that the general obligation bonds will be issued. You're not voting to actually issue the bonds. The school board is issuing the bonds.
Correct.
Because you all have the taxing authority, then that's why it has to come to, to you all.
I'm, I'm clear. I'm very clear on that. Is there any way that you can at least print out the resolution so that we can see? I just don't personally feel comfortable, um, voting for something without it in front of me, and I'm gonna tell you why. Same reason I held, um, the information at the hospital years ago, was on the hospital board, and they were voting on things that no one had ever read or seen. And I just, number one, don't think that it's good practice. Um, we do want to make sure the school system gets what they need, but we can easily print it out so that we all conscious of what we're actually voting on. Um, I just think it's irresponsible of us just to vote on something that we have no clue what we're really voting on.
Any other questions?
Commissioner, I'm in the process of printing the resolution so the board can have copies so they're able to, uh, look at the information.
Okay, so...
And, uh, let me, I'm, I'm sorry, just to add to that, the, it looks like from my quick scan of what was two sixty-seven, that back information that was stapled to that was actually the, should be the supporting documentation for two sixty-eight.
Okay. So, uh, again, it, whether it passes or not, so that we can all do, uh, adhere to our responsibilities, I'm just asking that we hold it until after it can be printed out and can come back before the board in this meeting to vote on, otherwise as the, um, the holders of all county funds, including the school system and so forth, we're voting on something that we have not, we don't have it in front of us at this time, we only had it read to us. But that's, um, up to the, um, the will of the board, but I just think it would be, um, a little bit questionable and responsible of us to do business that way without reading it.
Any other questions?
I would like for us to amend the motion.
So, um, if, right now, I believe the offer is to add it to the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Um, but, uh, this board, if you decide, uh, Madam, uh, Commissioner, if you wanted to move it to the regular agenda, if this vote passes...
My motion, so...
Correct. I mean, once, if the vote passes to move it to the consent...
Then she can move it, yes.
You could then move it to the regular agenda if that's your desire.
Got it. No problem. Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, for not enough information and voting on something that is not before us at the moment in writing.
All right, that's three of them, and it passes. Um, and that's for the consent agenda. So I guess we can open back up if she wants to put it on the, uh, the regular agenda, if that's your pleasure, Commissioner Franklin.
So I make a motion that we move that item just to the regular agenda, just to give us the opportunity to print the information so we can read it.
Is there a second?
And since you all typically don't, um, have to...
We don't have to vote on it.
That's right, my bad. You're, you're correct. You're correct. Madam Clerk, are you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
And do you have that documentation come to us?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair.
So, can I do this? Because I was confused on that last part, so I strike my nay, because we put it on the regular agenda. Thank you.
No, you, you struck, your nay was to put it, leave it on the consent agenda.
Okay, clear. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we didn't need a second, and I appreciate no outbursts. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Our next item is item number ten. This is our request for ratification. This is presented by our Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. This is a request for ratification of an emergency purchase, twenty-three dash two ninety-nine, which is transportation services for Clayton County Senior Services Department. The recommendation is to ratify the purchase, um, of the transportation service that was procured through Common Courtesy, Inc., they're located in Atlanta. This is for the continuation of services for medical transportation until we reprocure the contract. The pricing includes reimbursement of full fares that are charged by the ride-share company for six months in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, with the option for two additional six-month renewals. We also listed the number for the emergency purchase order, as well as the administrative cost per trip, which is one dollar, and the trip for the dispatch service cost, which is three dollars, and also the one-time registration fee. Is that the correct one?
Yes, that's on the table.
I think, Mr. Chair, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, um, if I could, um, I, I'm not sure whether the board actually voted on the consent items yet.
Oh, okay.
Yep, because we only voted to...
I think you only voted, before you, you voted to adopt the agenda.
You are correct. Appreciate that correction. All right, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I thought we voted, uh, it's unanimous, but I thought we voted on it, which we voted, and then it was three, it was three, one, and then Commissioner amended, not amended, but, uh...
So I think you voted to add, so you voted to adopt the agenda, and then I asked if you could add an additional item to the agenda, which you then voted to, uh, add that to the consent agenda, but then it was moved to the regular agenda, but then you all never went back and adopted...
I gotcha.
The consent agenda.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that clarity. That was what I was thinking.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
She already, she, where you finished?
Well, I can wrap it up, yes, sir. So, funding what's available through the Senior Service Department General Fund, um, the, the department's emergency request form and agreement are attached for your review and, uh, information, so the request is for you to approve the, uh, ratification, authorize the chairman who is designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contract, and authorize the interim, uh, CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next item is a request for ratification of emergency purchase. This is for twenty-three dash three hundred, which is transportation services for the Clayton County Senior Services. The recommendation is for an emergency purchase for transportation services for Clayton County Senior Services. The request is to ratify the emergency services that were procured from Two Friends Transport LLC, located in College Park, Georgia, for the continuation of services for medical appointments and transportation to senior centers while we reprocure the contract. The term is for six months with the option of two additional six-month renewals, in the total amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we did attach the emergency requisition, um, that we will convert to a PO, and this is for Two Friends Transport, Transport LLC. Funding was available through the Senior Service Department's General Fund and the Atlanta Regional Commission Grant Fund. The department's emergency request form and agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman who is designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contract, and authorize the interim CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next item is a recommendation of award for a, a professional service agreement, twenty-three dash three zero seven, which is pocket parks for District One, Two, and Four. This is at the request of building and maintenance. The recommendation is to award a professional service agreement to Gardner Smith, Gartners, Gardner Spencer Smith, Tench and Jebo, PC, located in Atlanta, Georgia, to provide design and construction administration for the pocket parks, in the total amount of three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, District One's total is one hundred and eight thousand, and that is funded through the twenty-twenty-one SPOST. District Two is one hundred thousand, that is funded through the Office of Resilience and Sustainability General Fund. And District Four is one hundred and eight thousand, and that is funded through the twenty-twenty-one SPOST fund. Funding is available, um, once again, through those sources. The department's recommendation memo and agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman who is designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contract, and authorize the interim CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
All right. Yes, how you doing? Um, DCO Murkison, for District One, for those pocket parks, I just want to ask you, um, you know, Conley is one of my areas that I was really, um, looking at for District One, to kind of get some pocket parks in that area, so is that one of the areas that will be receiving pocket parks for District One?
Yes, ma'am. So, the caveat with these particular grant funds is, if you'll recall, um, we were awarded two million dollars, um, to provide four pocket parks, so that's two million per, so we received a total of eight million dollars, um, in federal grant funds. These came through the state and fiscal local recovery funds, um, for these grants, for these pocket parks. The caveat with these particular pocket parks is they have to be located, um, in what's called a qualified census tract as determined by DCA.
Okay.
So the county has seventeen qualified census tracts, which per DCA meet certain poverty thresholds and certain underserved characteristics about that potential census tract, so this grant, I think it was called the disproportionate, um, disproportionate grants for, it's got a name about this long.
Okay.
Um, so when looking at the qualified census tracts, that's what drives where these pocket parks will be going in each district. In your specific district with District One, the qualified census tracts are in Conley.
Okay.
Um, once you get over toward Rex, Ellenwood, and more toward the DeKalb-Henry line, there's no qualified census tracts over there, so those areas don't qualify.
Okay.
Um, so this particular contract that's coming forward, the reason it's split is for the districts Ms. Carol talked about, those will be handled through a vendor and will utilize the funding sources that she brought forth. The qualified census tract for District Three, in Commissioner Franklin's district, um, the new county administration building happens to be in a qualified census tract, so to get the most bang for our buck, we've, um, merged the pocket park for District Three in with the new county administrative building, so that design will be handled by Nelson as a part of that overall design, and we'll kind of merge the grant funds with the admin building and get the most bang for our buck there, so that's why District Three isn't mentioned in this particular grant.
All right. Well, thank you for this information, great work, and I appreciate you taking care of Conley, especially, well, all of District One and all of Clayton County. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin?
If you could just tell folks who are listening, what is DCA? That's all.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Department of Community Affairs, State of Georgia.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the state, not the feds.
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item number seventeen, Information Technology Reclassifications, presented by our Human Resources Director, Pamela Ambles.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hambrick.
Since we passed the, um, consent agenda that had, um, hold on, resolution two fifty-seven, twenty-two-three, two fifty-seven, would that make the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and more?
No, I was understanding that it would not go into effect, that resolution, until tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, the, what's today? Twenty-second. Is that correct, Mr. Reed?
Yes, typically, although your resolutions say, uh, upon approval of the board, because your resolutions can be amended or rescinded anytime before the close of the meeting, they usually go into effect after the meeting has closed. So, they will go into effect today upon approval, but it will actually begin effect tomorrow.
Okay. What, what...
Go ahead.
With these, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, these are things that, uh, that will come under that agreement, and we have said over and over that budget time is when we look at reclassing and, uh, changes to, uh, personnel. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, not to you, I'm saying just to the board, to the board.
Uh, should the...
Are you gonna go and vote on them, one by one?
Yeah. Uh, well, should, should the, um, item remain as it has been voted on in consent, uh, then starting tomorrow, they will not see any additional, uh, items relating to these types of things coming before the board. Uh, that does not stop the board from deciding what they want to do with these that are currently on the agenda, but, um, the reason why they're on the agenda now is because the effect of that rule will take place tomorrow.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, can you read the item that was passed, uh, on the consent agenda for clarity, please? Mr. Reed?
Two fifty-seven.
Wait a minute, which one are we, what, what?
But we're discussing it without, without any, um...
The one from the last meeting.
Substantive, um, information.
Yeah, so this is, uh, resolution twenty-two-three, two fifty-seven, um, how much would you, uh, like me, uh, to read?
It's a, it's a meeting of the business of the people.
Okay.
So we're having a conversation, and we need to understand, especially those department leaders out there, because I do have some questions, uh, surrounding them, so if you would read it, please, so, that, um...
Okay. Um, you want me to read the whole entire, entire thing?
You can read the first part and then, so, give a synopsis.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, resolution, uh, to amend, uh, standing, I'm sorry, resolution twenty-two-three, two fifty-seven is a resolution to amend standing procedural rules for the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to set policy for consideration of bu- personnel budgetary requests, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And this, uh, resolution, in short, amends your standing procedural rules to add conditions under which the board will consider requests from department heads and elected officials to raise salaries, reclassify employees, add, delete, and hire additional personnel, and that will take place, was basically adding a new section, uh, three, that says, "The Board of Commissioners finds it in the best interest of the citizens of the county that financial decisions related to personnel needs of department head and elected officials balance the needs of the requesting department head or elected official with the board's desire to maintain a strong fiscal, strong financial, fiscal standing and credit rating for the county. Repetitive deductions to the county's fund balance for personnel changes after the board has adopted an annual budget for the fiscal year jeopardizes the county's long-term financial stability. Therefore, once an annual budget has been adopted by the board, the Board of Commissioners will only consider requests from department heads and elected officials to raise salaries for current employees, or to reclassify employees, or to add and or delete personnel classification, which are made during the next annual department or office budget request period."
Are we going into the budget process?
Not until next year.
It'll start in January, but I think the intent of this is for it to be during the budget process and voted on in January. Okay, but I thought we started something now?
No.
About talking it, okay.
Mr. Chair, that was the reason I had to ask that.
Commissioner, I mean, uh, excuse me, Franklin.
Um, I respect you for what you do, and this kind of goes along with some of the other things that this board has voted unanimously to do, that not only the state, but, um, those have reiterated that we are outside of our home rule authority. And it's oversight on my behalf, because I was trying to get the other things taken care of. Uh, based upon what we understand, that all of us have learned through ACCG, which is the Association of County Commissioners, this resolution actually is contradictory to the state law, which allows for any elected official, whether we like them or not, to bring a, uh, request before this board. This resolution is in total contradictory of, of the home rule authority, um, and I urge this board once again to really consider what you do, and even though I understand that we want to, um, kind of have a process of procedure that is predictable, but we know that within a year, times change, things change, and the home rule is very clear. Any elected official can bring before this board a request for add, delete. They can come and ask for nails, but you cannot tell them they can't come before this board. That is not within the law and the rules and the guidelines. So I do apologize, I need to rescind my vote for the, um, consent agenda, based upon that fact, and, um, my statement stands.
You have anything to add? Reference to the home rule? No?
No.
All right, Ms. Pam.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner Hambrick, Commissioner Franklin, and Commissioner and Dr. Anderson, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Human Resources have, uh, has four requests. The first one, item seventeen on the agenda, LR eighty-two-hundred, and I'll go a little slow with this, read them, make sure we get them on the record. On behalf of Information Technology, Human Resources is requesting the Board of Commissioners consideration and approval of the following personnel changes. Delete Division Manager Archives and Records at Grade Thirty, Step Sixteen, with a total compensation of one hundred twenty-two thousand, thirty dollars. IT Chief of Staff, Grade Thirty, Step Thirteen, total compensation is one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Secure, physical security support technician, Grade Twenty-four, Eighteen, total compensation is ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. The ARC REC, Retention Specialist, Grade Nineteen, Step Twenty-One, total compensation is seventy-eight thousand, one fifty-four. Desktop Support Technician, Grade Twenty-four, Step Six, total compensation is eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Senior IT Business System Administrator, Grade Thirty-One, Step Nine, total compensation one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. IT Business Systems Administrator, Grade Twenty-nine, Step Twenty-eight, total compensation is one hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Business Process Analyst, Grade Twenty-seven, Step Twenty-three, total compensation one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight. Digital Equity Administrator, Grade Thirty-One, Step Five, total compensation is one hundred twelve thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. PSDN Services Coordinator, Grade Twenty-seven, Step Sixteen, total compensation is one oh six, two hundred and five. We're also requesting to delete the GIS Analyst, Grade Twenty-eight, Step Fifteen, total compensation one hundred twelve thousand, five thirteen. IT Inventory Control Specialist, Grade Fourteen, Step Nineteen, compensate, total compensation is sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Lastly, Senior Software Specialist, Grade Thirty-One, Step Fourteen, total compensation is one twenty-four, nine oh four. We are requesting to add the following position. We are requesting to add the following position. County Records Officer, grade thirty-three, step twelve. Total compensation, one hundred thirty-three thousand, nine sixty-nine. GIS Technical Coordinator, grade thirty, step twenty-one. Total compensation, one twenty-nine, three fifty-two. Systems Administrator, grade twenty-seven, step fourteen. Total compensation, one oh-three, seven eight nine. Archives and Records Coordinator, grade twenty-three, step seventeen. Total compensation, eighty-nine thousand, four seventy. Senior Desktop Support Technician, grade twenty-seven, step two. Total compensation, ninety thousand, four ninety-one. Infrastructure Administrator, grade twenty-nine, step three. Total compensation, one hundred thousand, two two seven. Infrastructure Administrator, grade twenty-nine, step three. Total compensation, one hundred thousand, two two seven. Business Process Analyst, grade twenty-seven, step three. Total compensation, ninety-one thousand, five twenty-five. Digital Equity Administrator, grade thirty-three, step five. Total compensation, one twenty-three, four fifty-eight. PSDN Service Manager, grade twenty-nine, step sixteen. Total compensation, one hundred and six thousand, one hundred sixteen thousand, four ninety-one. Once again, one hundred sixteen thousand, four ninety-one for the PSDN Service Manager. GIS Analyst, grade twenty-eight, step seventeen. Total compensation, one twelve, five thirteen. ARC REC Records Retention Specialist, grade seventeen, step fifteen. Total compensation is sixty-six thousand, nine one eight. And lastly, Junior Software Architect, grade thirty-two, step eighteen. Total compensation, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, one forty-four. Absent of any other budgetary considerations, the budgetary impact of this request is a savings of ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Is there, yes, ma'am.
May I have a point of clarification for Director Ambles?
Yes. Ms. Ambles.
Director Ambles, for the deletion for the GIS Analyst, can you repeat the grade and the step and total compensation? For the record?
For which one, Courtney?
For the GIS Analyst deletion.
Let's see, let me go back.
Can you repeat the grade and step? I have grade twenty-eight, step seventeen.
Okay, so the deletion of the GIS Analyst, grade twenty-eight, step seventeen. The total compensation is one twelve, five thirteen.
Thank you.
And if the board will excuse me for one minute, let me take a look at what CFO Merritt has.
Thank you, board, I apologize.
We good?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Uh, Ms. Montalvo.
Yes, Jamie is here. All of the department heads are here in regards to their request, Chairman.
Thank you. Purpose of this request and why it can't wait for budget, budgetary process?
Uh, yes, sir. So, we did a cybersecurity, um, strategic plan, and the positions of GIS, I'm sorry. County Records Officer, Division Manager of Network Infrastructure and Operations, System Administrator, ARC Coordinator, Infrastructure Administrators, and ARC Retention Specialist aligned with the GIS, I'm sorry, Cybersecurity Strategic Plan. We're also in the process of completing a GIS Strategic Plan, and the positions of GIS Technical Coordinator and GIS Analyst also align with that GIS Strategic Plan. The positions of Digital Equity Coordinator and PSDN Service Manager are parity issues. All of the other Division Managers are at grade thirty-three, and these ones are below that, so we are bringing them up to that level. With our onboarding of the JOTS CISA system, the Junior Software Architect position, we've asked to increase that salary due to increased responsibility, and we did ask for that in last year's budget request, and we were told to bring that back mid-year. And lastly, we reset the original classification of Business Process Analyst back to its original classification. The person we were onboarding, unfortunately, they took another position, so we're resetting that back to its original grade and step.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
When you said you were told to bring it back mid-year, when were you told? And who were you told by, and did you get it in writing?
It wasn't in writing, it was during our budget.
Review.
Review, yes, yes, ma'am.
And who told you to bring it back?
Uh, the chairman.
So, it never came before our board, during the budget process originally?
No, ma'am.
So, then this board didn't have an opportunity to vote it up or down?
No, ma'am.
And then it's going to save us money as well, and it realigns to fix an error with parity, right?
Um, uh, yes, ma'am. Well, this one, the Junior Software Architect, is for increased responsibilities, because as we onboard more modules with our JOTS CISA system, of course, you know, we're going to need to do more.
What was the reasoning behind bringing it back mid-year, though? Because that was not communicated to the board.
Um, I'm not sure, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. So, that just reiterates on record why I also state, number one, what we did in, thank you, Director, but what we did in the resolution, number one, is unlawful. It is not aligned with the law. Number two, is not aligned with best practices for budgetary evaluations and reevaluations. And it also is consistent with the fact that we're making decisions in silo on behalf of our board, and that was never brought before our board to vote up or down. So, thank you so very much for that. I'm glad that we're now going to save ten thousand, but basically, but basically what you're sharing with us is we had an opportunity to save a little bit more, if it had been presented to the board in a timely manner, as you must have originally requested through the budgetary process. So, thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Montalvo, your strategy plan, that occurred when?
Um, the Cybersecurity Strategic Plan was wrapped up, I believe, last month, and it was presented to the C-suite. The GIS Strategic Plan, we're not completely done with that, but when it is finished, we'll present that to the C-suite.
So, basically, most of these positions come about as a result of that strategic planning that you just had last month.
Yes, sir.
And the discussions we had on budgetary process occurred last year, which our code states that the chair, Michelle, set and review and discuss and present a plan in which any commissioner can sit in, but none have or even requested. But I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you for that, but for the record, we cannot violate our sunshine law. So, thank you for stating that, Mr. Chair. But, you know, forecasting is very important, so thank you for having foresight to have brought it before the board as you were working through that process. But I don't want the, the community confused. We cannot all show up at a meeting as a violation of the sunshine law. So, it is best that we go through the process.
No, but one, at least one can add the request, so we're not going to belabor that. Anybody else, did you have some, Commissioner Hamrick?
Well, it's not a question, but I just want to make a comment, it's not particularly with information technology. But we have groups that come before us and they say it's a savings. And not just you, but either it ends up not being a savings as the year goes on, or those positions are added back. So, I want us to really pay attention to that, our finance. But not just this group, but any group that comes before us like that and tells us it's a savings, and eventually it ends up not being a savings as the year goes on, or the next fiscal year is not really a savings. Just something for us to be aware of.
Chairman, before we go any further with this request, there is in question now of the actual amount of a savings, if any. When we were vetting this out with finance, it came out to be over an eighty-five thousand dollars savings. And I had conversations with Director Montalvo, because I know that she did, that just did not seem right to me. So, we made some changes and we made, went back and forth with some different changes. My understanding was that it was a ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollar savings. So, we would like to take that back, to relook at it, HR and finance, so that we can make sure that we are providing the board with the correct numbers. But there were a little back and forth, because initially it was eighty-five thousand, and I know that that could not have been the case. And Jamie and I had a conversation, she makes, we made some tweaks, sent it back, and here is where we are.
So, what part do you want to take back? You want us not to go forward with this at this time?
I'm going to say yes. We'll, we'll have to, based on conversations. So, let's hold it until after executive session.
Or rescind the vote?
There has not been a vote.
A motion is my own.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, you made the motion.
I can rescind the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're holding it until after executive session. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's you, Ms. Anderson.
All righty, I have three more. This is item eighteen on the agenda, is LR eighty-two oh-one. On behalf of Extension Services, Human Resources is requesting the Board of Commissioners consideration and approval of the following personnel changes. We're requesting to delete Principal Secretary, grade thirteen, step eleven. Total compensation, fifty-three thousand, nine oh-five. Also, delete Principal Secretary, grade thirteen, step eight. Total compensation, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen, uh, two hundred and seventeen dollars. We are requesting to add Office Administrator Senior, grade eighteen, step twelve. Total compensation, sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Event Marketing and Logistics Coordinator, grade twenty, step four, with a total compensation of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The budgetary impact of this request is a cost of twenty-nine thousand, one ninety-two. And Ms. Rebecca Hardeman, she is here this evening.
All right, Ms. Hardeman, as you come, is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we hold this in all budgetary items until after we can get with Ms. Merritt. And personally, I have a clear understanding of the process, because there was a gap in communication on the last one. And I think that for us to be responsible, we just need to hold all items. And then that way you all are sure you have the proper numbers. That's just my suggestion. And that's my motion, actually.
That's your motion, actually.
Yes, it is, sir. My motion is to hold all.
No, we're going to take them, we're going to take them one at a time.
Well, this one, sir.
Is there a second to this motion? To hold, yeah, is, is it to hold period or to hold until executive session?
To hold until after executive session. We need to be consistent with our decisions. The last decision, there was some confusion on the total amount. It didn't seem that I could see clarity of the process to ensure that the CFO is weighed in, so, so that we are all on the same page, I'd like to hold it.
All right, the motion is to hold. I will second that motion to hold until after executive session. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, two, two, I guess it goes nowhere, so.
Is there a motion to whether you want to approve or not?
So, we voted up or down. Is there a motion to approve? I will make the motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, motion fails due to a lack of a second.
And that's my reason for asking that we held it. Sorry, Ms. Hardeman.
Ms. Ambles or Madam Clerk?
Our next.
I apologize, rather.
Item is item number nineteen.
All right, item nineteen, LR eight-two zero-two, eighty-two oh-two. On behalf of the Office of the Solicitor General, Human Resources is requesting the board's consideration and approval of the following personnel changes. Delete Assistant Solicitor General, a quantity of five, at grade twenty-seven, step seventeen, at a total cost for the five of five hundred thirty-seven thousand, one seventy-eight. We are requesting to add Assistant Solicitor General, quantity of five, at grade thirty-one, step four. Total cost, five-five-six, one hundred. We're also requesting to delete Deputy Chief Assistant Solicitor General at grade thirty-three, step fifteen.
Excuse me, you didn't, you didn't add the cost.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I see that now. Let me, let me start over real quickly, you all. Make sure the record is, is clear. We are requesting to, to delete Assistant Solicitor General, quantity of five, at grade twenty-seven, step seventeen. A cost of five, for the total cost for all is five thirty-seven, one seventy-eight. We are requesting to add Assistant Solicitor General at a quantity of five, at grade thirty-one, step four. This is a total cost of five-five-six, one hundred. And the cost for that request is eighteen thousand, nine twenty-two. We're asking to delete Deputy Chief Assistant Solicitor, Solicitor General at grade thirty-three, step fifteen. Total cost is one thirty-eight, seven sixty-one. We are requesting to add Deputy Chief Assistant Solicitor General at grade thirty-four, step nineteen, at a total cost of one fifty-two, four-four-two. The cost of this add and delete is thirteen thousand, six eighty-seven. We're also requesting to add a grant-funded Victim Services Officer Senior at a grade nineteen, step one, at a cost to the grant of sixty-two thousand, six sixty-nine. The county cost for this request is thirty-two thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. And the solicitor is here.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
So, I'm not clear. Commissioner Anderson, how did you vote?
I said nay, it was two nays.
Okay, so it's two to two, so fails to move forward at this time. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Um, so the grant-funded position is.
Means you lose it.
Denied, okay, so giving money back? Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes. Um, Mr. Brooks, if you would come back, I think that you do need to state what this means to the county for that vote. And that's all I wanted to say. I think it's important that we understand the decisions that we're making.
The board at the October seventeenth meeting created a parity issue when approved by consent agenda several reclassifications of substantially similar positions with the DA's office, which put us out of line of entry-level positions. You're talking about folks who are equally educated with the same amount of experience, walking in, making different amounts, but that you can't justify, which could put the county at risk of violating the fair labor standards, which is the reason for bringing this before the board. Since that vote. Um, since that vote, I've been talking to HR, and we intended on getting this on the agenda the first meeting in November to which you voted not to bring forward any additional budget items. Um, the challenge with that particular resolution is similar. In, in that situation, when parity issues are created, I'm gonna always bring it forward. If I'm not on the agenda, I'm gonna come before you as a public, public speaker, I guess, because I have to. Um, not only that, but we just got awarded, or we just got told this past Friday that the state, the federal state was willing to cover ninety-four percent of advocate salary to add an additional victim advocate if the county would accept the funds. Uh, this vote that the Board just, or I guess it failed, no vote, basically says that the county is gonna be returning the funds that were allocated to Solicitor's Office for an additional victim advocate and reallocating it to some other entity in the state.
Let, let me say this. It was a no, it was a no decision vote. Uh, but basically, if you were, if there's funds that's available through a grant, you can bring that position back specifically.
That's right. It's on the Board. It's right before you.
That's what he just presented.
It's included with everything.
It is, because a parity issue was created also by the Board's prior vote.
But the parity issue is something that should be addressed, but also at the same time does not have anything to do with the award from the state.
True.
So if you need that advocate that bad, then bring, um, do what you feel.
I think they both are, they both are equally important, and that's why I brought them both at the same time. Um, by, by the no decision vote, I mean, I respect the Board's decision to not make a decision, but we giving money away that we don't have to. And also, and also, we could potentially be putting the county in, at risk of potential lawsuits for parity issues that we don't have to. Um, when...
What's the parity issue?
You have substantially, substantially similar positions paid at two different rates. If a person is applying as an ADA and an ASG, and one is funded at seventy-nine...
So you compare them to the district attorney's office?
The assistant, yes, ma'am. Um, in fact, when I first began this conversation with this Board, I think this Board introduced the whole parity issue to me.
I did.
To which I followed it up, followed up on it. And when the Board voted in October, there was not a single question. I was prepared to answer questions in October. Because at that time, immediately after that vote, in fact, during the meeting, I voted HR Director and was like, all right, now, now, now there's a parity issue, let's fix it. Um, to which the very next meeting, the meeting in November, this Board voted not to bring budget, budgetary issues before the Board unless it's budget time, which is problematic because our budget changes throughout the year for various reasons.
But, Mr. Solicitor, you've come before us, if not every month, about every other month with reclassifications?
Not because I want to.
I'm sorry?
I don't want to. I, I have to.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, oh, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Can I rescind my vote and redo it, redo it? Because if he needs the position, we need to go and do vote with it, so can I do that?
Well, we would have to rescind. Who made the motion on that?
She's just rescinding her vote, Mr. Chair. She has twenty-four hours.
Yeah, and then four, four...
She has twenty-four hours. Commissioner does.
Uh, Mr. Reed, Commissioner Anderson would like to rescind her vote for a positive vote.
That would be...
Do we need to go back through the recension, or?
Um, so you'd like to change your vote?
I'll change my vote. Mm-hmm. It's twenty-four hours.
So I guess you can just... Is it on, it's on the entire request?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I guess you would just have to say that you are rescinding your vote to make it, um, in favor of...
Approval.
Well, let me see, hold on. You are...
He's working this out.
You, um, who made the motion to, uh, who made the motion to...
Commissioner Franklin, but the motion doesn't change, um, sir. It's only the vote of the...
Let, let, let him finish this.
I was communicating with Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but he was, he was talking and he cut him off again.
Mr. Chair, I've been real patient.
No, I've been real patient.
Mr. Chair, he asked a question that Felicia said it.
You are, you are speaking out of order, okay? I've asked Mr. Reed to give us a decision as to how to move forward. Mr. Reed, can you please finish your thought?
And I'm gonna say, he asked who made the motion, and I was speaking to that, and this is in the process. I'm so sorry you took it personal, but my name was called, and I was responding.
Commissioner, Commissioner Franklin, we adopted Robert's Rules of Order, and I wish you would read it or something and abide by it.
I do.
Because it was unanimously, it was unanimously adopted, so we need to conduct ourselves accordingly. Now, Mr. Reed, can you please finish your thought?
So, um, so Robert's Rules talks about a motion being renewed, and so, um... The motion would need to be renewed by someone who... So, so Commissioner Anderson...
I make the, I make the motion. Um, I have to say so moved, so I make the motion that, do I need to rescind it?
Well, no, you can just make a, you can make a renewed motion to adopt.
Okay, I'd like to make a renewed motion to adopt.
I mean, to approve, I'm sorry, to approve item twenty, I mean, nineteen?
It's nineteen, mm, to approve item nineteen for the Office of the Solicitor General reclassification.
Is there a suck? I'll suck.
Second.
I'll suck in the motion. Uh, Commissioner Hamburg had a question. Questions? Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Yes, ma'am.
The solicitor said that we are saying no to a grant fund. This is not what you read to us. What you read to us was that the grant-funded position was already approved, and that the money was just being changed over. It's not saying we are approving a grant, or we disapproving a grant. This is saying you are adding a grant-funded position. Anyway, I just wanna, I just want us to be clear on what this is asking.
Yeah, let, let me, let me add this to it, Commissioner. The request is to add a grant-funded Victim Services Officer Senior at a Grade Nineteen, Step One, at a cost to the grant of sixty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The county cost for this request is thirty-two thousand six hundred and nine dollars. And the way we got to the county cost, the first add and delete is costing us eighteen thousand nine twenty-two. The second add and delete is costing thirteen thousand six eighty-nine, and that's, that what gives you your thirty-two thousand six oh nine.
I just don't want us to be confused to say that we are saying no to a grant. Only thing we are saying that the solicitor is asking is to change a position that's already funded with the grant. Am I, is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Uh, repeat your question, ma'am.
Okay. It's not a question.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's the statement.
Okay.
And the statement is that the, the grant has already been approved. What you're doing, according to this, what you're doing is changing. You're adding a grant-funded position, and you're changing something. It's not saying that we're saying no to your grant. It sounds like you already have the grant.
No, no. So back in, back during budget time, what I asked of the Chair was that the county take over, uh, we had two grant-funded positions at that time, advocate positions. Because at that time, the state would say that it's likely that the grants were gonna get cut in half. At, at the, at the minimum, it's gonna get cut in half, but potentially all grant funds were gonna be eliminated. We asked the county to take over those positions under the general fund. The county, uh, the county did take over those positions under the general fund. In October, uh, we learned that they, rather than cutting our entire grant funds, they awarded us a grant position. But when the county took over those two grant-funded positions, apparently at that time, those two grant-funded positions closed. So by add, when you say add, we are trying to, trying to replace, or not replace, reestablish the grant, uh, that, that the county took over. Um, and so now, I just learned on this past Friday that the cost is actually probably gonna be less than that because they are willing, they found some additional money where they are willing to fund even more than what they previously said they were gonna fund.
Okay. I just don't want this Board to be confused to think that we are saying no to a grant, when that's not the case. You already had the grant. The county took it over.
Yes.
So we're not saying...
That's what I'm saying, well...
I just want us to be clear.
They, they will, if the Board votes no, that grant position, we won't have any grant positions. That, that's a, that's not a misstatement. There's, the, the status...
But I thought you said the county took it over.
Took over two previous grant positions.
That grant has ran out since.
We are, we are new grant funds. No, we are new grant funds.
We're not saying no.
And, and, and that's why I had asked, that's why I had asked, you can, your overall request, if you just brought back that one position for, to fill that grant position that you got funded from, is something that's totally, that can be totally different from the rest of this.
But this Board's resolution wouldn't even allow me to do that because it got awarded in October.
I just don't want us to be confused with what you're asking.
I'm, I'm asking this Board to approve a grant-funded position.
But I think some members think that we're saying no for a grant.
So that's just the bottom line. You are. Listen, there's, there's a motion on the floor and a suck.
That's another question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Number one, I want to make the statement that, um, there was a conversation that occurred that naturally should have occurred just now. I wish that I could be afforded that representation as Robert's Rules of Orders does allow. Secondly, this whole discussion was not in line with Robert's Rule of Orders I just sent to you. What we just had was a discussion that was to a motion that had already been voted on. The discuss, the motion that was just made by Commissioner Anderson was for the recension of her vote. And not that she's asked for us to, she wanted to reconsider. And so I just want us to make sure that we are on the same page with the reconsideration so everyone understands what we are exactly doing at this time. Because if, if not, are we rescinding the original vote? Because we have to rescind the original vote and the motion, or we just gonna have both of them sitting there? I just need to know. I'm asking, Mr. Reed.
The original, the original motion failed.
Right.
So what she did was made a renewed motion, which was seconded, which then led to this discussion about her renewed motion to approve this item.
But then we need to approve it to put it back on the agenda then, because we don't have that item to be on the agenda. I think we're missing a step, but neither here nor there. We will figure it out with your help.
So if, if there is no further discussion about this particular item, then you all can go ahead and vote, and then we'll move on to item...
Not specifically, what are we voting on? To revote? To say that we, a no vote, we're revoting on it? What are we specifically doing?
The, the effect of the, of the lack of...
No decision.
Right, you all...
You're in a rock and a roll.
You all, you all did not pass, well, it was, um, there was no decision on the other motion.
Got it.
And then after you all had, after you brought, um, the, Mr. Solicitor up to talk about this, then that led to Commissioner Anderson deciding that she wanted to make a renewed motion to approve item nineteen on the agenda, which was in the second from the Chair, and then discussion from Commissioner Hamburg. Now, you will, after this, if there's no other discussion, then you all will vote on, uh, the renewed motion to approve item nineteen.
Thank you for that clarity. You know, it would be good if we had a understanding so we don't, we can avoid some of this in the beginning. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions, comments? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Three-one, it passes. Next.
Our next item is item number twenty.
This is the last one for HR. Uh, LR eighty-two oh three, Corrections. On behalf of the Clayton County Corrections, Human Resources is requesting the following personnel changes. We are requesting to delete Corrections Officer Two, Grade Twenty, Step Four, total compensation is seventy-two thousand eighty-one dollars. Administrative Secretary, Grade Fifteen, Step Twenty-two, total compensation is sixty-six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. Heavy Equipment Operator, Grade Fifteen, Step Four, total compensation is fifty-four thousand four eighty-one. We are requesting to add Corrections Major, Grade Thirty-one, Step Sixteen, total compensation is one hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Executive Assistant, Grade Twenty, Step Fourteen, total compensation is sixty-seven thousand six fifty-seven. The request results in an overall savings to the county of six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Ward Nelson?
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a suck?
Second.
Any questions? Uh, Ward? So give us the, uh, information in terms of how this impacts your, your, uh, department and why you're making this request now.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. One of the things that we have found ourselves doing a little more, we've added in, um, the landscaping responsibilities, which is well over two dozen county properties and land bank properties on top of that. We're in three operational divisions that work outside of the prison, and, uh, this is more of a span of control issue where I can have accountability of one person to oversee those three divisions as well as, um, one requirement they'll be, is to check on these jobs. As the landscaping contractors do the jobs, we need to make sure that they are doing it to ensure that they're in compliance with, um, with our, um, contract. So that requires a physical inspection of the property to make sure that it's been done. There is a need for consolidation, um, because of the three divisions that I feel that this would be a much better fit for us, like I said, in the span of control, to oversee the three divisions outside. That's the first position. Uh, the, and, and the divisions that that would include would be Field Operations, Code Enforcement, and Refuge Control. The second one is a, it's not a reclassification, it's added responsibilities. The Administrative Assistant currently handles the all-personnel processes for all of the divisions. FMLA, uh, performance appraisals for a hundred and sixty-three positions, Kronos time records. Handles inmate mail screening, which is physically having to open every piece of mail that comes into the prison safely, with gloves on, um, go through and screen those pieces of mail before they go to the inmates, and also it's the reverse direction as the mail comes out to make sure that there's, um, no violations of law, no contraband coming in. Handles, um, inmate disciplinary court records. Once we have our disciplinary court, she has to input all of that into the state's computer system, which is the, um, the Department of Corrections' scribe system. And any actions that we take on the prison level have to be all handled through that state system. There's, there's a lot of added responsibilities. And, um, this position coordinates with all of the other divisions to, to make that happen because it has to come eventually to me, most of the paperwork, so that I can move it on, and it has to be, uh, organized and coordinated as such.
Any other questions for the Ward? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Three-one, it passes. Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Our next item would be item number twenty-nine on the consent agenda, or I'm sorry, the regular agenda. That's Resolution twenty-two-three dash two sixty-five. This is presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Resolution twenty-two-three two sixty-five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into Articles of Agreement with Prime Healthcare Foundation, Southern Regional LLC, DBA Southern Regional Medical Center, for the treatment of underinsured and uninsured Clayton County resident patients to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a suck? That's twenty-nine, about the hospital.
Oh, second?
I think so. Uh, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I want to know, has documentation been submitted for exactly how the funds have been used? Because once again, I, um, we had a meeting with Southern Regional and the community members were there. And at that time, we were told that money was already spent. So I know they stated they were going to stand up a clinic of some sort, but yet and still, as a representative of district of the county, um, citizens are still asking me, how is the money being used, number one? Number two, what are the plans for the hospital to improve the contiguity of services to ensure that it's no longer just a revolving door to those without health insurance? Because eighty percent of our community does have health insurance. So did we get that information submitted?
Um, Ms. Lena is working on getting that. This is to, um, form the, um, intergovernmental agreement with the hospital and then she'll be presenting that information to us. And this is for the uninsured county residents. So she's going to have a list of how that money is being spent towards uninsured county residents.
Good deal. And, but we're voting on it for the, um, so the intergovernmental agreement does not have that attachment of the protocol or procedures, how it's going to be used?
Um, I believe it.
You talking about that's agreeing?
Yes, does it?
So, um, the, the board had already approved a line item for this. Um, and my understanding is that the way they had been done is that they were basically, um, sending invoices and drawing down. This will just essentially, uh, for sake of time, move that money to the hospital authority. And then they will report like they, like any other nonprofit would. They'll provide reports of how the money was being spent, subject to audits. The same, uh, mechanism that we use for all our nonprofits through the Articles of Agreement would be, that would be the same standard that, uh, the hospital would have, other than those issues that would raise any HIPAA or other privacy issues.
I got you. So my question then is, is this amount, you know, is that the amount that we're transferring? Because you said, Mr. Reed, you just said that they have been drawing it down. Do we know how much they've drawn down so far? Do we know how much we're transferring to them?
What I communicated to Attorney Reed was that they are calculating that, not necessarily drawing it down, but calculating it for the entire amount to draw down. So this will allow, it's already been approved in the budget and with that being the line item there. Um, so this will just give us the authority to go ahead and send that over with an agreement that they're, that is what they're going to use it for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item will be item number thirty-two. This is the discussion item for.
Um, this is the two sixty-eight.
Okay. Our next item would be our add-on item, Resolution twenty-two-three dash two sixty-eight.
Uh, so Resolution twenty-two-three two sixty, two sixty-eight is a resolution providing for the levy and collection of an annual avalorum tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal of an interest on.
Ma'am, we're not going to have any.
Two hundred and eighty million dollars in aggregate principal amount of Clayton County School District General Obligation Bond Series Twenty Twenty-Three to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
My second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
I think we need to clarify that this is coming before, why it's coming before the board and that this Board of Commissioners is not passing, or as it was stated, more taxes to the citizens. Uh, and I thank you all for taking the time to print this out.
Yes, um, and so, uh, the short version is that the citizens had voted for general obligation bonds. So to count the, um,
On behalf of?
Yes, of, on behalf of the schools. And this is what this for. It's to provide the cost of acquiring, constructing, and installing one new high school, three new elementary schools, one new early learning center, acquiring school buses, service vehicles, um, navigational surveillance, communications, safety and security enhancements for security, existing school buses and service vehicles, acquiring and upgrading instructional and administrative technology improvements, including laptops, other devices for students, acquiring land for future schools and athletic facilities, modifying, adding to, renovating, uh, repairing, improving, equipping existing school buildings, athletic facilities, administrative facilities, event facilities, and other buildings. Um, and that was done in March of twenty-twenty-three, uh, for the, uh, education splotch that was voted on by the citizens. The total amount was four hundred and thirty-four million, six hundred and sixty dollars. I'm sorry, four hundred and thirty-four million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is only for, um, two hundred and eighty thousand, two, two hundred and eighty million right now. Uh, and because this board is the taxing authority, is why this is coming to you all, the school system is the one that's issuing the bonds because it was a E Splotch that the voters, um, voted on to approve.
But it's not adding any additional, it's a continuation of splotch once it's sales stack.
Correct.
So there's no additional.
No new tax, no new taxes.
You sound like the old prison.
I know. Former president. So no new taxes, it's just continuing what's already there. Um, but because this board, again, is this taxing authority, that's why it's coming to you.
I have one more question. So because, I'll wait, Mr. Chair, to acknowledge.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I almost feel like singing that song, Say My Name, Say My Name. But anyway, um, two hundred and eighty million. Um, is it going to cost us more or, but do we need to budget more for, um, the Tax Commissioner's Office? Or is it going to be the same? Is there no, is there an impact to the Tax Commissioner's budget? Because the Tax Commissioner can add her fee onto the collection, just because Terry Basken didn't do it before.
I, I'm not aware. I don't know if, um, Mr. Wallace here.
We can, we can talk.
Yeah, I'm not aware if there's a, if there's a budgetary impact for the, um, for the Tax Commissioner, um.
Let me tell you why I'm asking that and I want to make sure the audience and the citizens who are watching understand. All.
Mr., uh, Jefferson, if there is one more outburst from you, I will ask you to leave this gallery, sir. Please refrain from outbursts.
There are, um, constitutional officers such as the Tax Commissioner, the, um, Probate Court, as well as the, uh, another position, that have the ability to levy a fee for the processing of any additional work that is done on their behalf. So as we're talking about the budget moving forward, I just want us to make sure we keep that in mind as we move forward. Um, so, uh, that was really what I wanted to address. And then to be clear, clear to the citizens that this board is not passing any additional tax. That this is just, uh, as you stated and Mr. Chair has already stated, for us to authorize the constitutional officer, who, um, basically is the purse of the county, to collect that said fund and to operate within the agreement that you all have been so kind to print out so that we can vote on it with information in front of us. Thank you so very much.
Anyone else? Any other questions, comments? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item thirty-two. This is a discussion item from the C-suite regarding alternative funding source.
Of course.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, it's good seeing everyone this evening. Um, as our clerk alluded to, this is a, a, um, joint request or a joint update from our C-suite. Um, in light of the fact that this board has tasked, um, operations with ensuring that when the sheriff has come in specifically about additional resources he need at the jail, we recognize that, um, using our fund balance and utilizing other resources sometime can be very difficult as a board to make the determination around. So we recognize there is a lot of tools that we possibly don't utilize in our toolbox that could be of value to us. And so, um, there'll be a memorandum that our CFO had provided to our financial advisor, Mr. Ed Wall. Um, you should have got earlier today, um, an outline of alternative funding sources that might be in space that we can utilize to address some of those needs. Now specifically, the, the request came about because of the jail management itself. Um, the sheriff has asked for things like a modular unit at the jail. Um, and we know that that will come at an additional capital expense that we may not have in our coffers right now. And so we thought it would be of value to at least provide you an outline of other ways that we can cover debt in a more, um, strategic way. So ultimately, the board has some additional tools at your disposal to make decisions. Um, I'll let our CFO and our Chief Staff Attorney provide more context, but I at least wanted to set the stage what you have before you. And as you always say, let's make sure that we're transparent in providing our citizens more creative ways and more innovative ways that we can bring resources to this board in order to make more informed decisions. So which, with that, I'll, I'll table some of this discussion to our CFO.
I say so, I'm sorry for first.
Yeah.
So one, um, of the, uh, the work session that was presented and over a period of time, we've been dealing with I three, who has been providing an option for lease finance, um, mechanism. A C C G has a similar program in that they talked through some of that in this memo. Um, there is another option that's a little slightly, uh, cheaper, which is using the, um, Urban Redevelopment Agency um, as the taxing, well, as a bonding, um, a bonding authority. And so that timeline, because what we want to do is make sure that, um, the county is responsive to the sheriff's requests. And so what, if the idea is we may move forward with the U R A mod, uh, the, the U R A model as outlined through the recommendation of the, um, of a financial advisor. And then at the same time, as we're moving forward, trying to get the modular units to be looking at ground clearing so that when they come, we're not waiting to get things done, that they, the ground can be clear, the modular units can come, and then, and then, you know, management of the jail can, can, can continue. So, um, so this really was kind of to make sure that there wasn't really any, not asking for a vote, but there wasn't any opposition to this recommendation to how we move forward. You'll start seeing, um, uh, documents come within the next thirty to sixty days and, um, and hopefully move forward that we can actually, you know, get something on the ground there, um, early into, well, at least have something approved and then into the new year, getting it on the ground as soon as we possibly can.
Okay. I'll wait for Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes. Thank you so much for that. I'm glad that we're looking at innovative ways. And we do understand that as a constitutional officer, they can spend their money how they want. However, this board does hold the liability aspect of those modular units as well as the responsibility at this time because our current constitutional officers are not, um, conducting the, you know, they're not, um, withholding all of their budgetary items and then, um, I would say, executing them on their own. What I mean by that is we hold their insurance. So what I would like for us to do is to make sure that there are no holes in what we're doing. I'm all for doing innovation, but when we look at the cost, we need to go back to our liability insurers to ask them what is going to be the increased insurance cost. Because I'm going to tell you what can happen. What can happen is we can go through and make an assumption that our current, um, property and casualty insurance covers what we're getting ready to do. And they may require certain things to be done with the installation of those said modular units. So the only thing I'm asking you all as, um, operations is to make sure that you put that little check by the box so that you can give that information back to the board. And I'm asking for it specifically just to ease my mind to know that we've covered any hurdles in the beginning to ensure that we have the total cost of adding whatever it is that, um, this constitutional officer is asking to add. Fair enough, sir?
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the last thing that we wanted to add, um, again, if you have not had an opportunity to kind of read through the, um, I call it a short white paper from, from Mr. Wall, um, please let us know if there's some other areas that you would like for us to, uh, to be more mindful of. I think the spirit of the discussion has a lot to do with the fact that whenever you're able to apportion your funding over a longer period of time and not be having to pay that upfront, that it gives you an opportunity to bridge a gap. And so the bridge and the gap for us is to get to our next splotch. Our splotch have been our, our huge capital outlay program for us. We recognize as that come forward, we need to have some way to look at our capital infrastructure in a different way. Until such time, we can have funding in place to try, to take on some of these larger projects. So, um, that's kind of the spirit of the request.
Good work, staff.
And Commissioner, I did want to make one comment, you know, living in that splotch space for a long period of time, well before getting the COO hat, um, your question was very poignant as it pertains to expenses. What happens most oftentimes, even when constitutional officers like the Tax Commissioner needs to take on the fees and charges, it still lives within the total collection. It's not above and beyond the collection. So that comes in the form of a management fee, um, like we do with our, our splotch managers and all. They have to live within the total budget, but it may take away from the vertical and some of the other projects because you have to account for the program management piece. So it won't be an additional money, but they have to live within that, that total overall collection.
Thank you so very much. And let's be mindful that it don't slip through before the board as, um, to get it passed. Good work. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, starting with item number thirty-three.
Our first board appointment is to the Community Service Board. Martin Thompson resigned from the Community Service Board and moved out of, out of the state. Delroy Bernard filled this existing term and it expired on October seventh, twenty-twenty-three. New terms for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on October seventh, twenty-twenty-six. Full board appointment. Any recommendations? Madam Clerk, hold that till next, next meeting. Next board appointment is to the Library Board. Nawana Patterson resigned from the Library, Library Board. Existing terms for three years, beginning immediately, expiring on May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-six. Dr. Anderson.
Good evening. Um, I would like to appoint Ms. Dawn Gates, um, to the Library Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next is to, to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Joe Grubbs has resigned from the Department of the Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. He was appointed on, in twenty-twenty-one to fill the unexpired term of Jana Scott. The existing terms for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, Madam Clerk, this is Commissioner Davis', uh, recommendation. So just hold it till the next meeting.
I'm clear, Mr. Chair. Our next items are zoning hearings, starting with item number thirty-six. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly to the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profanatory, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. My name is Mary Darby and I am a planning consultant with the Community Development Department. And I have the pleasure to present zoning cases before you this evening. The first case is B O C twenty-two oh-two oh-one eight-six, which is a rezoning.
And Mr.?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, this is in, uh, um, Comm, Commission District Four.
Yes, and just for the record, uh, Commissioner Davis, who's got tied up and he still says he's going to try to make it, but he has given me instruction in terms of how he would like to proceed. So we're going to hear these.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a decision-only case. This is a request by Creative Community Concepts L O C to rezon seventy-two twenty-nine Mont Zion Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh-two three-six, from A G Agriculture to G B General Business for a personal service shop. However, I would like to, um, state that we did receive a revised letter of intent and the applicant is proposing to, um, actually have a restaurant in Delhi without a drive-through. Said property consisting of approximately one. Said property, consisting of approximately 1.308 acres, is further known as parcel 12078B A001, and located between Spring Place and Mount Zion Circle, and there is a companion case, BLC 22020187, flume with this case.
All right, is applicant present? This is for a decision only, so I will ask if there's any statement you'd like to make prior to.
No.
Okay, so one of the things that Commissioner Davis wanted to reiterate was that at this location, there'll be no nail or hair salons.
Correct.
Or fast food.
Correct.
And you're in agreeance?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, then, behalf of Commissioner Davis, I'm gonna recommend approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay. BLC 22020187 is a request by Creative Community Concepts LLC to amend the future land use map category for 7229 Mount Zion Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia 30236, from low-density residential to general commercial for a restaurant and deli without a drive-through. Said property, consisting of approximately 1.308 acres, is further known as parcel 12078B A001, and located between Spring Place and Mount Zion Circle. Planning and zoning and sustainability staff recommend denial on August 28, 2023. The zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval.
All right, applicant, please come forward.
Yes.
It's, this is the, my, excuse me, my name is Raquel Obumba. I'm a resident of District One, and I'm the owner of Creative Community Concepts LLC. This is a companion case to the previously voted-on item for the rezoning for the future land use map.
Would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal, as this will be a public hearing?
Yes, two minutes.
Two minutes. All right, so this is a public hearing, this request. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say so.
Mr. Garber.
On behalf of this Clayton County citizen, being in a, a independent business, I would ask this board to approve her request, because if we don't give these entrepreneurs a step up, we're taking a step down. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right. Any use of your last two minutes?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Okay. All right. With, with that being said, on behalf of Commissioner Davis, again, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrun. Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Our next item is item number 38.
Good evening. This is a request by the Board of Commissioners to amend the future land use map category for 2735, 2773, 2774, 2784, 2794, 288, 2804, 2814, 2881, Forest Parkway, Hill and Road, Georgia 3024, 30294, from mixed-use industrial to general commercial. Said properties are in the Highway 42 overlay district in the GB General Business zoning district and located between Old Grant Road and Interstate, Interstate 675. Said properties are known as parcels 12182A, B004, 12182A, B005, 128, 12182A, B005A, 12182A, B006, 12182A, B007, 12182C, B007, 1218, 12182C, B004, and 12182C, A006. The north side of Forest Parkway, the five subject properties were rezoned to general business in August of 2023. The south side of Forest Parkway, the existing Wildflower House was built in 2005, the McDonald's in 2006, and Creek Trip in 2003 are already developed. Staff recommendation is approval, and Zach recommendation was approval as well.
All right, so applicant present?
The, we are the applicant.
Okay. This is a Board of Commissioners' request. This is a public hearing, so at this time, is there anyone here like to speak in favor of this board's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 39.
BLC 2307-0341, which is a request by the Board of Commissioners to rezone existing fee simple single-family attached townhomes to the RTH Single Family Attacked Town Home District. This RTH district was approved by this board in September. We have 2717 parcels within the townhome subdivisions, or have been proved to be townhomes. This does not include subdivisions that are zoned PUD. And again, it does include parcels that were recently rezoned for fee simple single-family attached townhomes. This is a brick town of District One. This is a brick town of District Two. Long with District Three and District Four. Staff recommendation was approval, along with Zach recommendation was approval as well.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, would anyone like to speak in favor of? This is a Board of Commissioners' request. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 40.
BLC 2307-0341, which is a request by the Board of Commissioners to rezone existing fee simple single-family attached townhomes to the RTHs. I'm sorry, that was previous one. BLC 2307-0343, which is a request by the Board of Commissioners to rezone 3964 and 3978 Thurman Road, Colony, Georgia 30288, from RS110 Single Family Detached Residential to ALI Light Industrial. Said properties are located on Thurman Road and Church Street and are further known as parcels 12241AC003 and 12241AC006. So at the intersection of Church and Thurman Road, we have a industrial building that is being used as a warehouse. And then on Thurman Road, we have another non-residential building that is being used by, as a battery exchange place. And staff and Zag's recommendations are approval.
This is a Board of Commissioners' request. Public hearing, anyone would like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? All right, those in favor, I. Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 41.
Thank you. BLC 23060325 is a rezoning. This is also a companion case, BLC 23070335, for a conditional use permit. The applicant is requesting that these two items be tabled until December the 19th, and I will read them into the record.
Okay, is applicant here as well?
Okay.
Are you in agreeance with tabling?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrun, you in agreeance with the table, or you'd like to hear?
No.
Table it. Okay. Well, we won't need to read into it, we don't wanna do all that. Is it one or two?
Two.
Mr. Reed, can we take both of them for the tabling?
Yes, you can table both.
Commissioner Hambrun, how would you like to proceed with your motion?
Right, I move that we table BLC 2306-0325 and BLC 23070335.
All right, so second.
I second it.
To what day?
Oh, to what day?
December.
What's the date for the next?
They requested a date.
December 19.
Right. Yeah, December 19.
All right. Any questions? All right, those in favor, I. Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number 43.
The applicant has requested that this BLC-2305-0312 and BLC-2305-0311 be tabled to December 19.
19.
Applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good, good evening. My name is Doug Chatham. I'm the partner in the application for this request. We're making this request tabling due to the fact we didn't receive our Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal comments until late this afternoon, and I don't know that anything is going to hinder what we're trying to do, but I just wanna make sure that we have time to research it and we can meet his needs that he's requested. That'd be the purpose for the request we're tabling.
Commissioner Anderson, how would you like to proceed?
Good evening. I am aware of the issue with the Fire Marshal, and we will get down to working with you all to see where we need to go with that. So at this time, I would request that we table BLC 2305311 and BLC 23050312.
Until?
Until December 19, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
I have a question, please.
Thank you.
No, sir. No, sir.
Our next item, our next item is item number 45.
BLC 23060323 is a request for a flume amendment, a request by Battle Law PC to amend the future land use map category for 2850 and 3,000 Mount Zion Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia 30236, from mixed-use to general commercial for a car dealership development. Said property, consisting of approximately 28.90 acres, is located between Fielder Road, Lake Spivey Parkway, Highway 138, Mount Zion Parkway, and I-75. The associated tax parcels include a 22.09 acre portion of 12075D, A009, 2850 Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, a 6.5, a 6.45 acre portion, portion of 12074CB002, 3,000 Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, and a landlocked approximately 0.365 acre portion of 2901 Mount Zion Road, known as Track Two of 12075BB003, which is separated from Track One by I-75. Planning, zoning, and sustainability staff recommend approval. On November the 6th to 2023, the zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval.
Applicant. Ms. Battle.
State your name and please advise if you want to save any minutes for a rebuttal.
I'll save two minutes for rebuttal. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Habersham at North Lake Tucker, Georgia 30084. The application currently before you, and we do have a number of them, so I'll try not to belabor the point. I can do, if you tell me how you would prefer, I can either do my full presentation on this and then we just take a vote afterwards.
However you want to proceed.
However you want to do it, Michelle. All right, well, I don't want to say it by time, so we'll do it this first time. Again, this is the flume component of this. We are seeking to amend the current flume designation to commercial, to general commercial. The site, as indicated by staff, is at the intersection of Fielder and Mount Zion Boulevard. We are near the CarMax, moving into the city of Stockbridge. The current land use designation for the property is MXD. We are seeking to go to commercial. This is the site. Oops. Sorry about that. The overall intent here is to relocate three car dealerships that are currently located at 6865 Jonesboro Road, which is the Toyota South Atlanta, Honda South, located at 6871 Mount Zion Boulevard, and Kia South Atlanta, located at 7310 Jonesboro Road. Those are the three locations that would be relocated to this site, in addition to having a collision repair center for those types of cars. We believe this is an appropriate use. We, again, are immediately adjacent to the CarMax. We don't feel that this corridor really could stand any type of multifamily, which is, or mixed-use type project that involves any type of multifamily, in light of the surge of multifamily that has been in this area, particularly approved by both, well, approved by the city of Stockbridge. So we have presented this to the Zag Board. They indicated their support for the overall project. Again, these are the sample evaluations, even though there has been some update to the Honda look and to the Kia look. And I will stop there.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here, it's a public hearing, anyone here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber.
I'd like to say so.
Come forward. Mr. Jefferson.
Yes, sir. Timothy Bondell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. This is the type of development that we've been working hard on behind the scenes, and I think this is a viable concept. So I agree with Zag and the recommendation by the staff for approval. Thank you.
Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, and yes, I'm in total favor of their relocation. That puts these dealerships together where it's dangerous out there on Jonesboro Road going. going in and out there. That road needs to be improved to handle all those dealerships. So their relocation, I'm in total favor of, and it puts the dealership closer to my house. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I am in favor of, I just wish you all would, I'm sorry, me, of Ballen, District Four, Clayton County. I am in favor of, it's a wonderful idea. First of all, I wish you all would come to Terra Boulevard and put something so beautiful like this. I mean, good. So I'm in favor of, thank you.
Drew Andrews, District Four. Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. I'm in favor. My question is, once those three auto dealers leave, what happens? Is it just blight? So that's what I would like to hear. But I am in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Ms. Battle, would you like to use your two minutes worth?
I don't have rebuttal, but I can say that the current owners of those sites would be putting those sites up for sale, what they would be used for. I don't have a response to that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Again, speaking on behalf, there was no, well, I don't think this is the, the item yet for conditions.
No conditions.
Because this is the flume, right? All right. I don't know if we spoke to you about it or not, but, okay, Commissioner Davis's behalf, make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number thirty-six. I'm sorry, forty-six.
The next item is a companion case to the previous item. This item is BLC twenty-three oh six oh three two zero. It's a request by Battle Law PC to rezone twenty-eight fifty and three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three six, from mixed use to general business for a car dealership development. Said property consisting of approximately twenty-eight point nine zero acres is located between Fielder Road, Lake Spivey Parkway, Highway one thirty-eight, Mount Zion Parkway and I seventy-five. The associated tax parcels include a twenty-two point zero nine acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-five-D, A zero-zero-nine, twenty-eight fifty Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, a six-point-five-four-five acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-four-C, B zero-zero-two, three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, and a landlocked approximately zero-point-three-six-five acre portion of twenty-nine-zero-one Mount Zion Road known as Track Two of one-two-zero-seven-five-B, B zero-zero-three, which is separated from Track One by I seventy-five. Planning, zoning, and sustainability staff recommend approval. On November the sixth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval.
Ms. Battle.
Michelle Battle, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. We respectfully request approval of the application. Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak again in reference to being in favor of this request? Anybody in opposition to? All right, again, on behalf of Commissioner Davis, this is forty-six, right? We still on forty-six, right? Okay.
Yes, Mister.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I? Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number forty-seven.
BLC twenty-three oh six oh three two one is a request by Battle Law PC for a conditional use permit for automobile sales at twenty-eight fifty and three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three six. Said property consisting of approximately twenty-eight point nine zero acres is located between Fielder Road, Lake Spivey Parkway, Highway one thirty-eight, Mount Zion Parkway and I seventy-five. The associated tax parcels include a twenty-two point zero nine acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-five-D, A zero-zero-nine, twenty-eight fifty Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, a six-point-five-four-five acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-four-C, B zero-zero-two, three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, and a landlocked approximately zero-point-three-six-five acre portion of twenty-nine oh one Mount Zion Road known as Track Two of one-two-zero-seven-five-B, B zero-zero-three, which is separated from Track One by I seventy-five. Planning, zoning, and sustainability staff recommend approval without conditions. On November the sixth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval with conditions, and the condition is that the three existing Clayton County car dealerships be relocated to this location. That concludes my report.
Ms. Battle.
Again, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. We would ask for approval of this application. The condition requested by the ZAG Board is acceptable to us. Again, these will be the relocations of the three, um, three dealerships as indicated. Thank you.
Hi, it's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of?
Again, good evening. Herman Drew Andrews, District Four. Again, I am in favor, but I just ask that the owners be made responsible for keeping the former location in good, clean, in decent order, maintaining the beautification of the former location, and two, they are able to sell it. So it just won't fall into a place of blight. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Ms. Battle? No, I need to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner wanted a couple of other conditions added.
Okay.
If you're in agreeance with, he wanted eight-foot sidewalks and street lamps.
That is fine.
Okay. So staff, if you could just read the conditions again into the record as agreed upon by Ms. Battle on behalf of her clients.
So case.
Yes.
Case number B zero, B zero C twenty-three oh six oh three two one. Conditions are that the three existing Clayton County car dealerships be relocated to this location as well as that the applicant provide eight feet sidewalks and that street lamps are provided with the property as well.
Yes. All right. With them being in agreeance with that, Commissioner Davis's behalf, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I? Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number forty-eight.
BLC twenty-three oh six oh three two two, a request by Battle Law PC for a conditional use permit for vehicle repair shops at twenty-eight fifty and three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three six. Said property consisting of approximately twenty-eight point nine zero acres is located between Fielder Road, Lake Spivey Parkway, Highway one thirty-eight, Mount Zion Parkway and I seventy-five. The associated tax parcels include a twenty-two point zero nine acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-five-D, A zero-zero-nine, twenty-eight fifty Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, a six-point-four-five acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-four-C, B zero-zero-two, three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, and a landlocked approximately zero-point-three-six-five acre portion of twenty-nine oh one Mount Zion Road known as Track Two of one-two-zero-seven-five-B, B zero-zero-three, which is separated from the track by I seventy-five. Planning, zoning, and sustainability staff recommend approval. On November the sixth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval.
Ms. Battle.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. As previously stated, we would request approval of the application. Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of?
Mister Chairman?
Miss Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. The only reason I'm getting up out of my seat, seat to speak to you about this issue is what you just did a minute ago when Mister Davis requested eight-foot sidewalks. Y'all led me to believe that any new construction that goes on in this county will automatically have sidewalks. And now it has to be put in as sidewalks? I want them all to be put in as sidewalks. Now, one other thing, piggybacking on Mister Andrews here, any places that these people abandon, they must secure them so places they don't get dumped into. And the new areas that they go to occupy, they keep the litter picked up. Now, without those requests for both things, this county is gonna stay filthy. And I hope you would consider what I just said. Thank you.
Mister Garber, it is within our code that all new development does.
Excuse me, sir. I was walking away. I didn't quite hear you.
In reference to your sidewalk question.
Yes, sir.
The code does dictate five, it's five or six feet sidewalks.
Okay.
The request is for eight, so it's going beyond what the code requires. And they're in agreeance with.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. I didn't quite understand where it came from and where it was going, but I do have a clearer understanding now. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Again, on behalf of Commissioner Davis, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I? I. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number forty-nine.
BLC twenty-three oh six oh three two four, a request by Battle Law PC for a conditional use permit for a billboard at twenty-eight fifty and three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three six. Said property consists, consisting of approximately twenty-eight point nine zero acres is located between Fielder Road, Lake Spivey Parkway, Highway one thirty-eight, Mount Zion Parkway and I seventy-five. The associated tax parcels include a twenty-two zero nine acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-five-D, A zero-zero-nine, twenty-eight fifty Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, a six-point-four-five acre portion of one-two-zero-seven-four-C, B zero-zero-two, three thousand Mount Zion Parkway, which is separated from the remainder of the parcel by Mount Zion Parkway, and a landlocked approximately zero-point-three-six-five acre portion of twenty-nine oh one Mount Zion Road known as Track Two of one-two-zero-seven-five-B, B zero-zero-three, which is separated from Track One by I seventy-five. Planning, zoning, and sustainability staff recommend approval. On November the sixth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning advisory group voted to recommend approval.
I don't have to call your name anymore. You just pop right on up.
There you have it. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. I'm gonna ask staff if we could go back to my PowerPoint. I did want to just make sure that you all understood where the location of the billboard would be. Oh, there's a, there's a street, there's a aerial view from there. So, um, again, with regards to the billboard, that will be for the advertisement of, of those dealerships. We certainly want people to know that they have relocated. We believe that the billboard is appropriate and will be located right off of the highway. And so we would respectfully request approval of, of the billboard application. Thank you.
Public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? On behalf of Commissioner Davis.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the height of the billboard?
Ms. Battle? Height of the billboard.
That is a good question, to which I think it's about fifty feet.
Any other questions?
Certainly above.
Tree line.
At the trees. Yeah. I don't believe we'll be removing any trees. And one other thing I wanted to address. We certainly are, and the owners of the dealerships that will be relocating, the sites that they are leaving will be maintained. I know that has been raised as a concern. I believe that, one, that is their intent in the first place, but, two, code enforcement certainly would be able to cite them if they failed to do so. But we will be maintaining those properties until they are sold to new owners who will be taking over. We know that the county doesn't want to see any blight on those. And I know that the Commissioner would prefer them not be used car, vehicle dealerships. We cannot control what they are based on what the current zoning is. It's zoned what it's zoned. But I know that they will be actively seeking someone to acquire those properties so that they don't stay vacant for some extended period of time.
All right, thank you. All right, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I? Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Our next item is item number fifty.
BLC dash two-three zero eight dash zero-three-five-three, which is a request by Bethlehem City of Faith Church for a conditional use permit for a childcare center at five-fourteen Valley Hill Road, Southeast Riverdale, Georgia, three zero-two-seven-four, which is in the AG Agriculture Zoning District. Said property consisting of plus or minus twelve point five acres is further known as parcel one-three-one-seven-I-B, C zero-zero-four-A, and located between Winter Valley Court and Tipton Drive. Said property is also located at the T and Saxon of Battle Creek Road with Valley Hill Road. So the church is set back pretty far from the road. Staff recommendation is approval. ZAG recommendation is, is approval with two conditions. Provide all required indoor and outdoor play areas and provide fence around outdoor play areas.
Applicant present. Please state your name for me, and if you would like to save any minutes for rebuttal, should somebody be in opposition to?
James Seniker Burger, the pastor of Bethlehem City of Faith Church. I'll leave those two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Proceed on. No, is there anything you'd like to say in reference to your request? He was like, hey, man, I got it, that's it. He was like, hey, man, I got it, and that's it.
Listen, I'm new to the ballgame. Hey, I'm talking to the party.
Is there anything more? And he's a pastor, and he tried to leave early. And you had the mic.
Well, listen, I got a word for you. We can stay here.
Pastor, we need a word. You might need to go ahead and engage.
I'm praying for y'all. I'm praying.
Anything you'd like to tell us about your house?
Yes, what we've done since we've been there, we do a lot of outreach in the community, do a lot of feeding the community and, you know, giving out school supplies, things of that nature. That place was actually run down for a number of years. We purchased it. And when we came in, we just renovated everything, as you could see. If you would've seen the before and after pictures, you would be quite shocked. There was about at least three fifty-foot dumpsters we filled with trash. They used to do drugs and stuff in that area, but we turned it around and did a lot of evangelism work in the community, so the community knows us. And so, we want to be a service to the community, providing childcare for the people we service in that community and provide a wholesome atmosphere for them. And we do understand we have those conditional things we have to do, and we do have the schematics, the drawings for them, that we're going to provide a playground with a fenced-in area and also a player inside. But we're just looking forward to service our community. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody want to speak in favor of?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Nae Williams, and I speak in favor of the daycare.
Shortened to the point. Anybody else? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? And Pastor, just to reiterate, you are in favor of the conditions.
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right. With that being said, I will, on behalf of Commissioner Davis, make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number fifty-one.
This attended item, plus... So, items number fifty-one through fifty-eight. The applicant has requested that this be tabled.
Is it fifty-seven or fifty-eight?
Fifty-one through fifty-eight.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Is applicant present? Or did he just send you a?
He sent an email.
All right, so I will make a motion on behalf of Commissioner Davis to table items fifty-one through fifty-eight until December nineteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, is there a lead? I think that's it. I'm sorry. That's right, public comment. I was trying to rush it. Okay. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Do your thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorum and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Gary Mosley. Gary Mosley. Pat Bryant. Pat Bryant. Chris Gallagher.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Gallagher, Clayton County. Recently, Clayton County Water has detected that they have chemicals and they're like PFAs, fluorobutane in their sulfonic acid, PFOA, perfluoroctane sulfonic acid, and PFAS, polyfluoroalkylines substances. The PFOA levels were eight point five parts per trillion, PFOA five point five per trillion, which over a state level of four PPT is recommended. PFAS chemicals are chemicals are forever because they do not break down. Tanks and military customs, even the atomic bomb were code with this original. But companies like DuPont and 3M started using them in retail for grease resistance, heat, oil, water resistance, and they see a lot of products using these, like non-stick Teflon pans, carpets, fabrics, sleeping bags, clothing, boots, pesticides, and firefighting foam that they've had problems with. Coke Simple Tropical Juice has just tested one hundred times over the Environmental Protection Agency limits. We use water for so much bathing, cooking. You know, kids in the swimming pool, chemicals absorbed, you know, through that, their in-bow water isn't regulated. How much is in there? Farm animals, like cows, drink the water, and with PFAs chemicals in there. And are children being exposed to milk they're drinking that have these chemicals in there? And weather products are consumed to have in there. Now, they did a test across the United States, and ninety-seven percent of people's blood tested positive for having that chemical in there. The chemicals do not leave the body. They do not break down. They just keep increasing with consumption over time. PFAs are like silent bombs swinging to go off. Some of the health problems from these chemicals are change in liver enzymes, liver tumors, increased risk of kidney and testicular cancer, precociousity in pregnant women, decrease in birth weight, decrease in vaccine response, hormone imbalance, miscarriages, high blood pressure, thyroid disease.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher, but your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin.
Mr. Gallagher, thank you for bringing this up. I don't know if you saw it, but the Water Authority, Bernard Franks, did send out some information in a notice that they're working on this, and this is, this issue, as you just stated, is very prevalent, not just in our community. Seems like we have the most effect with it, but it's something across the US. And so, please, check your e-blast if you get it from me, because I believe we put that notice in there. But I'll also set up a meeting with Mr. Bernard Franks so that the board there can share with you what they're doing.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, and the best way to move is like reverse osmosis, but like a lot of people cannot afford that. So, I was just trying to figure out what we could do, because it's a serious consequence.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Unincorporated, Clayton County. I want to highlight some of the excellence that we have going on in our community, such as the fire department, police department, Department of Transportation, the Water Authority. We operate in the spirit of excellence. And I just want to truly thank the Economic Development Office. We just did a bus tour. Commissioner Anderson, that was one of the most positive things we've done in a long time. Thank you for being a participant. So, within that, the things that are happening that are positive within our community, we have to fight the negativity. And the negativity is that we expect excellence from our employees, the twenty-six hundred, the twenty-six different departments. And when one of the leaders is out of order, there's a video, body cam video, that has six hundred and fifty views. That is just despicable. But yet, one has a tendency to abnormally think that they can become chairman and not suffer any consequences of their behavior. We have to raise our standards on our elected officials. Unfortunately, I supported Commissioner Franklin in her first run, and so did you, Chair. And it's very disheartening to see the egotistical behavior and narcissistic attitude that has transpired over the years. And we need to move forward, and we cannot do it with the negative publicity of our elected officials that make our county look absolutely ridiculous. So, with that stated, I hope that we can all, as elected officials, move forward in the spirit of excellence and take responsibility for our actions. Thank you, sir.
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chair, I'm still running for chairwoman of Clayton County.
Thank you for the PSA.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. In my home, it stated, "Take care of the pennies, and the dollars will take care of themselves." However, on the other hand, to be penny wise and dollar crazy will not allow you through heaven's gate. With that being said, let me ask, what is the update to the Roman Group debacle? Excuse me, the Roman Group theft of taxpayers' money of $559,000 for the business incubator? And how much has been spent so far for that retrieval of stolen funds? Using Commissioner discretion, I am anxiously waiting for your reply. You have a minute. A minute. Please respond.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Garber, I have Mr. Reed. He is going to be checking and working with, trying to get that money back. So, if you can, Mr. Reed, can you? Well, I know it's a legal matter, but...
Exactly. It's not exactly a law that you can answer.
So, we'll just go from there, but he is working on getting the money back.
I just needed an update, because now it's been six months, and they've been holding, somebody's holding our money.
Yeah, somebody's holding our money, and we're gonna get it back if we can.
Can I get your signature on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, can I have a point of privilege before we end? I would like for us to please keep in prayer the city of love joy. There's a police officer who passed away this week, this past week, who was actually one of our previous deputies. His name was, he was Lieutenant Patrick Mac McCleland, affectionately known as Mac. A lot of times, our officers, first responders, are not necessarily lose their lives in the line of duty, but at the same token, the toll on them. So, I just want us to keep him in prayer. And then also, I want to congratulate Dr. Lawanda Falami on her honors this past weekend of being a pillar in our community and supporting the sickle cell community through MTS Foundation, as well as her support of educating our children in a non-conventional manner and making sure that we are building true champions within our community. So, I just wanted to shine a light on those two things. And then finally, we always talk about building the county in better business. If you want to see a better county, citizens, make sure that you go online to ClaytonCountyGA.gov. There's a small business incubator survey there that you can take, and we are in the middle of our comprehensive plan. That's where you all can share your thoughts of the type of businesses you would like to see in our community. And those documents will guide the decisions of this board for the next ten years.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, Executive Session on Litigation, Personnel, and Real Estate.
Is there a motion going to Executive Session for personnel litigation and real estate?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
All right.
You don't know.
Motion to reconvene?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Second by our Commissioner Franklin. Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, take them together.
All right. I've got settlement agreement in the matter of Marcus Stroud, Alexis Edie, Clayton County Board of Commissioners at all, relating to an accident that occurred on November 2nd, 2022. And the amount of that is $150,000. The next is approval of property damage for the claimant, Marcus Stroud, and the payee is Progressive Mountain Insurance Company for damage to 2020 GMC Sierra, which was a total loss. And that is for the November 2nd, 2022 incident relating to Marcus Stroud and Alexis Edie, and that is in the amount of $37,080.91. The next is settlement between Tana Valentine and Ray Ford, Clayton County Board of Commissioners at all, relating to an accident that occurred on, a traffic accident that occurred on January 30th, 2023. And that is in the amount of $35,000. The next is a settlement in the amount of, I'm sorry, a settlement between Stephen Williams and Jacob Finn, County Board of Commissioners at all, relating to an incident, a traffic accident that occurred on April 22nd, 2021, and that is in the amount of $150,000. The next is a settlement relating to Kathleen Constantine, on one hand, and Nicole Jones, the Board of Commissioners, relating to a traffic accident that occurred on April 5th, 2023. And that is in the amount of $40,000. The next is settlement relating to Savannah Brignack, Rodney Baxter, Clayton County Board of Commissioners at all, relating to a traffic accident that occurred on June 7th, 2022. And that is in the amount of $100,000. And finally, is a settlement in the matter of Patrice Daniels and Calvert Whitworth in Clayton County at all. And this is relating to a traffic accident that occurred on June 19th, 2021. And that is in the amount of $100,000. And I'm asking that the Chief Financial Officer has authority to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses required under the terms of these agreements.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Ms. Ambles?
Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of the Office of the Chief Staff Attorney, Human Resources is requesting a 3.75% step increase for administrative manager Sasha Young. Absent of any other budgetary considerations, the request has an annual budgetary impact of $3,557.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hamrick, second by Commissioner Anderson. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
On behalf of Court Administration, Superior Court, Human Resources is requesting to transfer legal assistant to Lady Jordan from the District Attorney's Office to court calendar clerk for Judge Mason without a decrease in her compensation. We are requesting to transfer her at grade seventeen, step twenty-four, at a cost of $6,258.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Chairman, in revisiting the IT request earlier, Jamie, Angela, and I, we have revised the request. And the request will result in a savings of $1,453, and this was vetted with Ms. Angela Jackson, the Deputy Chief Financial Officer. So, if the board wants me to go through this again, I'll be more than happy.
No.
Okay.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Same to you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much.